My web browser and I, we don't get along. Um, okay, it is six o'clock. It is time to call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order for May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Ms. How would you take the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young? Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath? Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougall?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear? Yes. Carolyn.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thanks. Um, Ms. Cleland McGrath welcomed a baby girl into the world last Wednesday. Um, and she would like to be excused from tonight's meeting, much as she would like to be here.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Oh, I move to excuse Ms. Cleland McGrath from tonight's council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Walters. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries. All right, at this time, we'll move on to announcements and committee reports. First of all, I have a brief COVID update. Um, Mr. Holgland and I met again today, and based on what we believe the March figures are, and what we're, we believe April and May will look like, we're still within good shape of the, what we've designated in the budget as savings, we think at this point, we're still in good shape financially to continue to provide services without any reduction in staff at this point. Um, we're working with all the groups in town on festivals, and to date, um, oyster runs been canceled, uh, shipwreck days has been canceled, Fourth of July parade's been canceled. We're waiting to, our festival board is working on some options, but we're hoping we'll hear from them in the next couple of days, what they're planning for possible postponement or delay. Um, we have canceled the parade. We do have the fireworks though, and so we're gonna look for opportunities later in the year to have a fireworks display for the community. Uh, we'd already ordered them, and it was gonna be a substantial amount of money to return them, or cancel the, the contract, so we thought perhaps later in the fall, or New Year's, something, we could do something special for Anacortes. So that's what's going on with events. To date, we've had seventeen applications for our HUD grant program for small businesses, so we're very encouraged by that, and we're taking applications through this Friday. So anyone that would like to apply, there's still time. We've been working with the Anacortes School District on a senior class parade, in the sense where, um, and each person would be alone in their own car with the windows rolled up, and this will be the night of graduation, Wednesday, the seventeenth. It would be staged from the high school, uh, leaving the high school around three thirty. They're gonna bring us a route we've yet to approve, or they're bringing us a route to look at, um, a safe way for the, to give the seniors a send-off. And then at seven PM that same evening, they'll have a virtual graduation. So not exactly what the class of two thousand and twenty plan, but we are, we're working to make it, you know, a COVID graduation. Uh, we're working really closely with the businesses, um, and the hospital, as we look down the road, ten to twelve days for phase two to begin, and that's where the restaurants get back fifty percent, uh, capacity. Salons are allowed to open, and all, a lot of, several other retail, um, providing social distancing. So we are, um, working with that. I know Don today literally talked to a dozen restaurants, and how to expand seating area to help them with capacity, because the capacity, fifty percent capacity is based on your building occupancy capacity, and if we can give them some options outside, this will give them the ability to bring more folks to the table, so to speak, with social distancing. So we're working really hard to get that, that going. And, um, and as to date, the Island Hospital, someone asked me, uh, what was going on in Island Hospital. And Island Hospital has had, or Anacortes has had twenty-eight cases to date. Um, no deaths in Anacortes. Fourteen of those were in clinics, I think seven were seen in the, um, were inpatient, and the balance were seen in the emergency room. So Anacortes as a whole, um, has done very well. Whereas the county's numbers as of today, we've had four hundred and twenty-five cases in the county. Uh, that includes two hundred and forty-three people recovered. We had fifty hospitalizations in the county, and fourteen deaths as of today. And that will complete my COVID update for tonight, and more to come on Wednesday at my community briefing. Any thoughts or questions on that? Okay.
Mayor Gear.
We'll move on then to item two B, which is our Public Works Committee report.
Mayor Gear, could you also speak a little bit about the meeting video situation?
Yes, for the, the briefing?
No, for the briefing, for our council meeting.
Yeah, we're having some issues with Granicus. And so the live feature is not available during the meeting right now. They can see it after the meeting, on, you know, online. Um, and it is a problem that Granicus has, not the city, and they're having it across the board with their program. And I know that, um, IT and Mitchell and Steve have worked round the clock with this company. So we've got some work ahead of us on that, but, so tonight, they're not seeing us live. They'll see, they can see us a little after the meeting tonight. Not the best situation in these COVID times.
It's been, uh, several weeks like that. I would suggest that's probably a breach of contract on their part, then.
Okay, I, you know, I'll bring that up tomorrow. It's with Darcy, and well, maybe that'll, um, change the situation. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And then for the briefing on Wednesday, we're gonna use some YouTube and Facebook connections, so people can watch that live, um, because of the Granicus situation.
Mayor Gear.
Okay, so Public Works Committee, two B.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougall.
Sorry, um, I missed her, my, my connection timed out for a minute there when we were excusing Ms. Cleveland McGrath. Was anyone able to excuse Mr. Young as well?
No, we were unaware.
Uh, um, yeah, his, his spouse had a medical procedure, like nothing serious, but he's taking care of, uh, Joe. So, um, I move to excuse Mr. Young from this, this evening's meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McDougall, a second by Ms. Moulton, to excuse Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. All right, now, we'll move on to the Public Works Committee report. Who would like to give that?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Um, thank you. Um, one thing that I wanna mention that's not related to Public Works, but is related to COVID nineteen and the Small Business Development Grants, is I believe the deadline is, uh, a week from Friday, Friday, May twenty-ninth. Um, and so for anyone that's listening, or-
Thank you.
Sure, and anyone that's listening, or watching, or knows a small business owner in Anacortes City Limits, I, I urge you to apply for this grant. Um, it can be extremely helpful for your business. Um, and if you have any questions, you can direct them to Don Misimer or Joanne Stewart at the city, and, and their contact information is on the website. Um, so I just wanted to, to mention that. Um, but, uh, on to the Public Works Committee meeting, which happened just before this council meeting, um, with Mr. Walters and I were both present. Um, we got an update about some projects. Um, the roundabout at, on Oaks is being wrapped up with lots of positive feedback. Um, the Flori Field project, um, is moving forward with some outreach, and the work is beginning. The, our fiber, our fiber network is being entered into our GIS system. And, um, Russ Pittis is applying for, um, an electric vehicle charging station grant. Um, so those are things that are ongoing. Um, as far as the raw water line and the Clearwell project, um, the contractor will start construction in two to three weeks. Um, materials are being ordered, those take some time. The forty-two inch pipe and two thousand feet of it that are needed, um, take about twelve to sixteen, fifteen weeks lead time. So, but that's proceeding very, uh, on schedule, if not a little bit before. Um, and then for the, the sewer plant downfall, there are, there is an options analysis being undergone right now. Um, and there are five options. So there will be a table of the pros and cons of each option, and the relative costs, and that will be, that will be coming to us down the line. And that's it.
Great. Any additions to that?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Uh, we also talked a, a little bit, you know, briefly about the A Avenue dump, uh, situation. And I think the conclusion from the Public Works Department is that soon, uh, the city will be publishing a webpage with information about the dump, how it was closed, what closure is supposed to look like, and how, um, things on the ground that may look askew may actually be consistent with that closure. Uh, so I'm looking forward to that, as I'm sure other people are as well, because we have all these documents, and there's certainly been a lot of interest in it. Um, I, I brought that up, added it to the agenda, because we did receive a document from Bob Jefferson describing the dump site and all of that, um, material that is visible on the ground, um, in some areas. So, uh, obviously it boos us to take a look at that, but there's a lot of more information that we don't have at this point. Uh, also, their, um, Public Works is gonna be putting together a webpage about, uh, the wet fiber tech that we have used to deploy fiber across the county. And, uh, that will be a very useful place to keep information that multiple citizens have asked for, about, you know, how that works, and how we were able to accomplish that. And, um, for me, as a council member, it's really useful if we have individual pages on our website, have a narrative, um, that lives in perpetuity in a spot, so that we can go back and look at those later, rather than me having to dig out a, a council packet memo, where it's only a point in time, and it's not necessarily the latest information kept up to date.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
And, and back to the A Avenue dump site, uh, issue, my understanding is we had a, have an ecology inspection coming up at some time, or am I confusing this with another dump site?
That's the dump, I, I think it was supposed to be county public health.
Oh, yeah, county public health.
That we'd have difficulty getting them to actually do the inspection.
So, uh, again, just to not confuse-
Yeah, that's in the works with them, and, yeah, I think the COVID thing, they started that, but they haven't finished it because of the COVID. And what Mr. Ryan, Mr. Walters was referring to is, there are some documents that we have-
Gotcha.
That were in place at the time of closing the dump, and that's what we need to get on the website, because it explains why things were done the way they were. So we, and we have that information, which I just recently became aware of also. Um, so, get that done. Anything else? All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to item three, our consent agenda. Um, items A, B, and C, minutes, approval of claims, and a contract award. Your pleasure.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller.
I move to approve items, uh, A through C on the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Ms. Moulton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign, motion carries. Other under businesses, evening, we have item four A, access Anacortes fiber internet update. Ms. Hsu.
Good evening. I'm just gonna pull up my screen here. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. Um, tonight is part of our monthly update on access to Anacortes fiber internet. Wanted to start with, uh, some good news for you. Um, I thought that, that it'd be helpful just to see month over month, that where we are in terms of in-service. Uh, we have a hundred and thirty-eight customers in service now, with six static IPV four addresses, bringing in revenue of nine thousand two hundred and eleven dollars per month. And, um, as we are doing the installations, the customers are sending us emails, and just, uh, thanking us for, uh, being able to offer the service, so just included that, just as a little bit of information for you to see the, the feedback from, from community members.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Uh, so I, I did note some concern among some members of the community about the slow pace of growth in the service. Um, suggestion that forty-seven years from now, all the houses in town would get hooked up. But I think that this chart clearly demonstrates that we're not talking about linear growth. Um, eventually, we will get to a spot where we probably are growing linearly, but we went from nine to thirty to a hundred and thirty-eight connections, month over month, in three months. I think, um, people should feel assured that we are going to get things done a little bit faster than we did four months ago. And that it's really not gonna take fifty years to get it done.
Thank you. In regard to, to customer orders, um, as we mentioned, we have a hundred and thirty-eight customers. This breaks down the, what the service provided, um, for both residential in this column, and then commercial, um, and how we're determining the, the revenue. And I thought it was also helpful to, to look at where we are with the, the take rate. So within the commercial business district, we're at twenty-eight point six percent. Uh, we're at thirty-two point six percent in Old Town. M Avenue is at twenty-two point five. And the aerial expansion, expansion area that we're getting to, uh, by the end of two thousand and twenty, is at nine point six percent. And then citywide, uh, twelve point nine percent. So in total, uh, fourteen point four percent of all households and businesses in Anacortes have either, um, are currently in service, or have pre-signed up for service. This is what that looks like visually, um, that there's a lot of interest just it's throughout the, the entire city. This is where we have pre-orders, um, and then also in-service. So the area that we have a lot of people in service right now, are, is in the Old Town and the Commercial Business District. The blue areas are the aerial expansion areas that we're, um, working on the remainder of this year. I wanted to just, uh, let people know that on May eleventh, we began following Governor Inslee's construction restart, um, and are doing in-home installations. We are following the thirty guidelines that are outlined, um, in those requirements, as they relate to training and supervision, social distancing, personal protective equipment, sanitation and cleanliness, employee health, and job site tracking. And that has been received very well, uh, by, by members, or by community members that we're, that we're working with. We also continue to have the option of a no-contact installation, if people are more comfortable with that. Um, we're trying to work with wherever people are at, um, in terms of getting them hooked up. In two thousand and twenty, our expansion areas, um, the aerial expansion areas, I thought it'd be helpful just to see on a, a map, the, the different areas. So right now, the design is complete for areas two, three, four, five, and six here. Um, the materials have been ordered, they were ordered on May first. We are working on additional pole attachment agreement. And next week, we expect the construction contract will be presented to, to council. Um, and that, that, that construction will begin in July, and then the home installations will be able to follow, um, after that work is complete. And the areas one and five here, in the expansion area, that design is underway right now, and then we'll follow that same process. In terms of, um, customer signups that are not on our GPON network, just wanted to give you an update that the city of Anacortes is almost all, um, transitioned over in terms of our internet and our point-to-point, um, and the different services that we, that we have within how our, um, IT works. We are working with the Samish Indian Nation on ad hoc installation through a grant that they have available. Um, and there'd be four different buildings that we would be providing, um, installation to, where they will be paying for the, um, cost associated with the, the build-out to those sites. Uh, the grant does require that the work be complete before the end of two thousand and twenty. We're still working with Island Hospital on a dark fiber arrangement, and, uh, waiting, uh, to be able to finalize that, that agreement with them. And then we have three different arrangements with Knowanet. Um, you'll see that I have them listed as customer two and three. When the, becomes more finalized, then, then we'll go ahead and include the, the different information about the customer. This, uh, first one that we're working on is the, with, between Knowanet and the K twenty education network. We're going to be providing a two gigabit per second ethernet circuit. And that master service agreement will be presented to council next week on the twenty-sixth. Uh, there is some construction that is required as a part of that, so we'll be doing that in June, uh, getting them in service in July. Uh, will be dependent upon an interconnection, uh, with Mount Vernon. And that will bring in ten thousand dollars in annual revenue, because it'll be prorated in two thousand and twenty, that'd be five thousand dollars. And we have two other customers that we have provided responses to, uh, that are looking, uh, for, for service, uh, at different options of one, five, or ten gigabit ethernet service. One thing I wanted to talk about tonight is a service suspension policy proposal. We initially discussed this in November, but we did not put it into actual policy. Our proposal is that, uh, residential customers may suspend their internet service, effectively deactivating their equipment while they're on vacation or out of town, for a minimum of sixty days at a rate of twenty dollars a month. And as we did, um, some reasoning and, and thinking about that, uh, we did find that our competitors have a very similar program. We think that this would be a positive experience for our customers. They do not need to have, um, anybody come to their home. They do not have to turn in equipment. Um, but it, it puts it, them at the lowest, um, at half of the lowest cost plan that we offer. And it makes it just simpler for them to be able to call and say, okay, I'm ready to go back into service. If council is comfortable with that, what we're recommending doing is next week, bring that, um, before you, and to incorporate into the United States schedule. Um, this is, we're, we're calling it a service suspension, but the way that it's being looked at really is, uh, thinking about a snowbird policy for people that travel, um, for long term, for longer times.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Uh, thinking, Ms. Hsu, is there a maximum time that people are allowed to have that rate?
We don't have a, a maximum. Uh, well, actually, we will deactivate their service, so they would not be able to utili- utilize it, but there would not be, um, so they wouldn't be getting internet access for that reduced price. But it'll allow them to put it, their service on hold until they return.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Uh, so Comcast and Wave have similar policies, as far as you know?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And any other questions on this?
Mayor Gear? Sorry, Mayor Gear. Yeah, wha-, uh, just a, a comment, uh, on the, you know, customer one and two, the Knowanet customers. I think I read, my screen's a little small, about ten thousand dollars a year, something like that, for the K through twelve. Is that the right number, potential?
Yeah, the K twenty is, uh, ten thousand dollars in annual revenue, because we will be starting that July one, and two thousand and twenty, it would be five thousand dollars.
So it reminds me of the other good news story of the city of Anacortes internet point-to-point, where I think we did the math on that a while ago, and that's close to fifteen to twenty thousand dollars of savings to, uh, legacy ISP providers. So, again, that, it's, I'll highlight that one more time, and appreciate, appreciate it that we, uh, have moved our city, our city over to our own system.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We continue to do, uh, customer outreach. You may have seen this on our Facebook page. Um, this is our most recent promotional outreach. And it wa- went live on Friday. We've had over twelve hundred people, but it's reached with a hundred and six link links. And as of this afternoon, we already had thirteen people sign up as a result. It's a really effective way for us to, to do advertisement. I think it, that we've spent thirteen dollars on this advertisement, so. Trying to continue to, to spread the word. And that concludes just a quick monthly update for access. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. McDougall.
Um, Ms. Hsu, that was, was it a hundred and eight new activations in the last thirty days? Was that, we went from like thirty to a hundred and thirty-eight?
Uh, I think it's even a little bit more than that. So we went from forty customers to a hundred and thirty-eight, so a hundred and eight.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank, thank you and the entire team. Um, great, great month turning that, many customers up, um, wonderful news, good job.
Thank you, and, and have a great team that I'm working with.
Good.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters.
Uh, it seems to me, from some of these statistics, that we are getting pretty good uptake, that people are excited about the service. We're getting subscriptions where we've made it available, we're plugging people in as fast as we can. Uh, we constructed this whole concept as a pilot. And that was with the understanding we were going to make an affirmative decision as to whether we were going to continue it beyond the pilot. And, um, I, I think we're seeing us continue to slip beyond the pilot. So it seems to me that now would be a good time for the Fiber Committee to take on in-depth, um, writing a, maybe a resolution for council to adopt, saying, yes, we are going to go beyond the pilot. And we could, we could write in, we could brainstorm and then write in some circuit breakers. You know, if, if things start going awry, then we would take another course. But do some math, figure some things out, uh, figure out what those, um, the next phases' costs are, because they'll be different from this phase, and, and, uh, have the council make that decision, um, rather than us continuing just to sort of slide towards it. Is, is the rest of council supportive of that approach?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller.
Uh, yeah, and I was thinking about that as you were briefing the aerials, but, you know, clearly, we've, we've spent some money to go beyond the pilot areas, and that's fine, and I think we all know that. But, but I think, uh, Mr. Walters does bring up a good point, that we should affirmatively, you know, I'm, I'm fairly confident we're gonna get the right numbers in the pilot areas, but we should affirmatively state that, and, uh, kind of lay out our pain point about how much money we're willing to spend in the aerials before we really, uh, move forward and, and have the, have the thirty, thirty-five percent take rate in the pilot areas. So, yes, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, I'll try Google.
I, I also think it's a good idea. Thank you, Ryan, for starting the, the conversation. Um, and would like to dig into the, the numbers. I kind of do a, an analysis of construction costs as we've gone through the pilot areas, and see how, basically, how well the original business model has performed on the, the construction estimates. Um, because that'll help inform us as to next phases as well.
Okay.
Good timing to begin this discussion. Uh, we do have a fiber, uh, council committee this week, so we'll begin pulling that, that information together for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walters, thank you, Miller, and Mr. McDougall. And we'll, we'll get to work on that. Anything else for Emily tonight? All right, we'll move on then to item four B, Resolution two thousand and eighty-six, authorizing the execution of bargaining agreement by and between the city of Anacortes and the International Brotherhood of the Team- by and between the City of Anacortes and the International Brotherhood of the Teamsters Local 231. This is an action item. And Ms. Bronzema, here she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm looking forward to presenting this, this collective bargaining agreement to the council. I see that we're light and the two out of the three of the Personnel Committee members are absent. So that's good because they already are pretty well briefed on it. So just a high level summary. I started with the city almost a year ago and started negotiating with the Teamsters the fall following my, my joining the city. We put together a pretty comprehensive compensation study as a part of the routine negotiation process. And so I'm really pleased to present a big work product as a result of that. The details are outlined in the packet materials, including a summary of the changes. I think for the council, it's important to highlight some of the financial impacts of the bargaining agreement. So a quick summary of those. The, in 2020, the tentative agreement, or the TA, has a 3% cost of living adjustment. However, the parties agreed to withhold conversations for the remaining years. Because as we were coming to the tentative agreement, the seriousness of COVID started setting in. So that is a combination of, of the agreement. And because we are partway into the contract year, the parties agreed to do a retroactive payment in, in the form of a one-time lump sum payment. And that's not necessarily common. However, this is a huge time saver for our payroll staff and finance staff. And is a little bit more straightforward. So some of those are some of the unique elements that you might not be as familiar with. And there is a maximum amount. There's some logic to that number, I'm happy to address. There are some other financial components, mostly just logistical. And again, happy to address, address any questions you might have there. I do just want to highlight that this is a structural change for the compensation structure for the Teamsters. So the Teamsters represent almost, almost half of the workforce. We have about 245 regular employees and there's about 100 members represented by the Teamsters Union. So pretty impactful for the city operations. These are our public works employees, parks employees, a lot of the administrative staff and others throughout the, throughout the city. And with the, the compensation study we did as a collaborative study, which took some time, of course. What we learned was some of our positions were behind market. And so this is something that gets folks into a structure that gets a position at market. But each individual employee is, is going to just see the, the cost of living adjustment. Unless their, their position was so far behind market that we needed to bring them up a little bit more. So it's a structural change. And the 3% cost of living adjustment is, has been supported by Steve Holland and the Finance Department and his staff. And I feel very good about presenting it to you, happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
So I've, I guess, two questions. One is the general concern. Obviously, as we're in a declared emergency and we declare a hiring freeze. To me, that also equates to a pay raise freeze. So I would be pretty reluctant to support any kind of pay raise, pay increase. I, I really appreciate it that the 231 recognized that, you know, 21 and 22 is a bit too far. But, but for me, it's a, it's a bit too far right now to be saying that we, we can approve a pay raise. So that's my, my first and biggest issue. And a smaller issue, I know there was some discussion about the Janus decision, Supreme Court Janus decision. And I guess the question I have is around 3.02. And my question is, why don't the employees get to notify the city? As opposed to the, says the union will promptly furnish the employer written notification from an employee who revoked consent of deduction of union initiation fees? Because that's central to the Supreme Court decision. So just if you could enlighten me a little bit more on what that discussion was.
Certainly, actually, this was incorporating a memorandum of understanding that was negotiated prior to the contract. So this was language that had already been negotiated upon the Janus decision. And so the conversation at the bargaining table with the, the union was incorporating that MOU. The new elements to that were including the neutrality of management when it comes to, you know, union membership or, or choice to, to join or not join. So the notification component, I would just say was our, it was pre-negotiated as a part of the, the MOU. And it, we, you know, I understand the question when it comes to the communication. We're notifying when we have a new hire opportunity for membership. But the withdrawal is actually the member's business. It's their, it's up to the, the unions. It's their business whether or not they have people on, on a membership.
I, I get that, but, but typically when you have various draws from your, you know, I, I took a government paycheck for a long time and you have various draws to various organizations, you get to have control over who you're sending that money out to. So, but back to the MOA, did, did, I guess I forgot when council approved that memorandum of understanding? Because this, I'm looking at, because I'm not on the Personnel Committee anymore. And I'm looking at the list of changes. And changes 3.01 through 3.5 are incorporating a memorandum of understanding. Should I presume that I already voted for that?
So that was before, I'd have to look up the specific date. That was before I, I started with the city. Janus was, it passed prior to that. So I'd have to look at the exact date for you.
Okay, I just, I'm just trying to figure out if that is something that we've already voted on, council.
Ms. Chu, could you answer that question?
The memorandum of understanding went into effect in October of 2018. And it was something that was negotiated with each of our collective bargaining units. And presented at least into the Personnel Committee.
So my point is now it's becoming part of the contract.
That's right.
Okay, so that, that's why it's, it's not, it's not, it hasn't, it's not a done deal. I mean, I appreciate the fact that the negotiations went on, but now we're really voting on it. Okay, thank you.
Ms. McDougal?
Yeah, I'm the only member of the Personnel Committee that's present this evening. But, and at the risk of being a little bit presumptuous. My colleagues on the Personnel Committee and I all liked this contract, liked the process that went into, into its development. And, you know, we felt, generally, it's been positively reviewed by the, the entire Personnel Committee. The timing is, is challenging, obviously, with the, with the pandemic. One of my feelings is that we, we still need to make this move anyway to put our, our critical workforce in, to get them caught up in salaries. To have a contract in place and that sense of security in place. And, you know, hopefully, we will see the, the federal government start coming up with some states and local government relief efforts and funding that would then, you know, essentially create a situation where we could actually face competitive pressure to, to lose employees if we're not maintaining or not keeping up with the market. So I like this and am, am quite happy with it.
Other members of the council? You know, this is an action item, so we can take two weeks to take action. You know, tonight can be the, we're introducing it, Matt threw up some good points. Bruce is the only council from the, you know, committee attending tonight. So there's plenty of time to talk. Mr. Carter, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gear. I just had a question. Is the, the 3% tied to the entire thing? Is that has to go along with it? Or is that something that could, you know, start, you know, six months from now? Given them a raise versus, you know, the rest of Anacortes isn't getting any kind of money? So is that something that could just start at a later date?
So the, the delayed start date is effective June 1st. I'm sorry, I didn't verbalize that. So the, in lieu of the retroactive payment for January through May. That's where that lump sum is coming from. But that's reflective of, of a figure calculated for those months. The 3% is intentionally set out to June. There's a lot of actual cost savings with that. There's retirement benefits that are paid at the, the former rate, for example, through January through May. And I guess the important point to note is these are the only group of employees who haven't received any sort of cost of living adjustment. So the rest of the city workforce has received some either through collective bargaining or through the, through the mayor's decision to, for the non-represented employees. So this is the only group who's been without. The 3% is a part of the total package. So the Teamsters did vote to approve this and it was an overwhelming approval for those who voted. And it is a package deal. So if the council decides to decline the package, I'll go renegotiate elements of the contract.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Ms. Bronzema. Put me in a little bit here. So 3% cost of living increase is a pretty standard procedure. Can you tell us just a little bit about that? It seems to me that that's a number I've seen many times as, as a very common, common percentage increase for cost of living. I'd like to know a little bit more background.
So 3% can be common, 2% is probably more common. The 3%, this is negotiations and so there's compromise involved. The 3% is what is a compromised figure. Part of that is knowing that, that we weren't going to be looking into wages for 2020. We, we waited on the cost of living question until we did all the research and all the compensation studies for the positions. We really wanted to, we used $20,19. We really wanted to keep things fair and structurally comparison, be able to compare apples to apples in the same year. So we tried not to have the cost of living adjustment conversation until most of that information was in. And so I would say that this is kind of a splitting, splitting it down the middle. 2% is a far more standard number. The union certainly was asking for a different number. And so this is a true compromise in that, in that sense. It was intended to be voted and approved by both parties.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters and Mr. Miller.
I think, you know, as I've expressed in previous years, I prefer that these things be structured such that cost of living adjustments are tied expressly to inflation and that salary surveys are, are bifurcated from the cost of living adjustment. And we clearly express those differences, both to the union, to other unions, to our, the rest of our employees, our unrepresented employees, and to the public. But I also understand that, you know, you start from those positions and then you have compromises as we work our way through, through the contract. And there's a whole bunch of compromises in here, including not having the retroactive pay. So, you know, assuming that this has been settled and negotiated by a competent professional, professional side, move that we approve the contract as presented.
So, so we have a motion and we have a second. But Mr. Miller, you have a comment.
Yeah, I was just asking, what, what CPI number were you using in the negotiation?
Do you mean which data point? Or we don't, we don't tie to CPI?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's why I don't support this particular raise as it is.
It, it can be an indicator, Mr. Miller. And however, it's not necessarily, we didn't agree on a floor and a ceiling for that necessarily. I'd be happy to, to look up the, the actual data for the CPI if you're interested.
No, I've, I've got it. So, thank you.
Okay, so any other discussions? We have a motion and a second on the table to approve Resolution 2086, authorizing the execution of the bargaining agreement by and between the City of Anacortes and the International Brotherhood of the Teamsters Local 231. Ms. Hunt, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Carter?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you, good discussion. All right, so at this time, we'll move on to item 4C. Resolution 2090, authorizing adoption of the Skagit County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief Oliveri?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to begin by taking the council members back to the council meeting on January 13th. At that meeting, I formally presented the Skagit County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. We had some discussion over it. The main point at that meeting was to solicit community input. After a couple of week period, trying to solicit some input from the community and residents. The plan was then submitted to the state and federal agencies, CIMA and FEMA. It underwent their review. They came back to Skagit County with some very minor modifications that they wanted to see. Kind of related to the general plan, not anything in particular to Anacortes. Those modifications were made. The plan was resubmitted to CIMA and FEMA. And very quickly, they came back with an approval. So the point we are at now is, since we have an approval from FEMA and CIMA, it is up to the local jurisdictions and the municipalities to adopt the county hazard mitigation plan by resolution. And that would be the last step in the process.
Any other questions, Mr. Miller?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember the January meeting. And I think our, one of our, our biggest issues was whether it was a natural or man-made hazard plan. But when I read through the package, it looks like it combined them both. Did I read that incorrectly?
Yeah, this is pretty much strictly related to natural hazards. Earthquakes, landslides, tsunamis, severe weather.
Okay, and I think that was, that was our main issue. But it sounds like nobody really cared about the name change to help make it easier for us. People don't look at it all the time, realize which one is our natural one and which one is our man-made, or shouldn't we have a combined one?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I'm not aware that we really even have an artificial hazard mitigation plan. But generally, these things are grant funded and they're grant funded to build a natural hazard mitigation plan. And thou shall not use the money to build any other types of plans. On the other hand, you know, a, an earthquake that causes a car crash is a natural hazard, even though it involves an artificial component. And an earthquake or a tsunami that causes a power plant failure is a natural hazard with an artificial component. So we can accomplish some of those things. And I wasn't able to refresh my recollection on this plan because the links don't work in the agenda document. But I assume it's basically what we looked at before. I think largely the point of these things is to have projects in there that can get funded by FEMA so that we can actually do the mitigation. Do we have any of those types of projects that you can recall, Chief, in, in Anacortes?
Honestly, Fred may be able to, to step in and answer a little bit more. But the hazard mitigation plan at the county level basically serves two purposes. The first purpose is to let everyone, our communities and our citizens, know how we will respond and what we will do if an event or a disaster happens. The second, and perhaps most important part of that function is the county has to have this plan in place and adopted by all of the jurisdictions and municipalities in order for us to then apply for any grants to get money back. in order for us to then apply for any grants to get money back in response to us handling a natural disaster. So basically, you have to have a hazard mitigation plan in place in order to apply for grants, for example, under the public agency or public assistance grants from FEMA. I know that recently, when we went through the storm process, I believe our Public Works Department submitted some things to Skagit County, and that pushed us over a threshold that made us, it made it possible for us to receive a grant for those monies. And I think without a hazard mitigation plan in place, we would not be able to do that. We would not be able to have access to those grants.
Yeah, so thank you for that. So because it's multi-jurisdictional and all done up by a consultant, and it's had its end of, end of its process here, there's really no opportunity for us to affect it in any way. I move that we approve it.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion? All right, so Ms. Hunt, if you'll take the vote for Resolution 2090, authorizing the adoption of the Skagit County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Motion by Mr. Walters, second by Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order tonight? All right, if hearing nothing, I'll adjourn the meeting. See you all soon. Bye-bye.